Fifteenth, twenty twelve, meeting of the Glendale City Council. Then we have a roll call, please.
Council members, Friedman.
Here.
Menuchyan.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here.
The flag salute will be led by Councilmember Weaver and the invocation by Chaplain Al Carcelazzo from Glendale Adventist Medical Center.
He's joined with me in our flag salute. I pledge...
...by the United States of America, Republic of which stands, nation, island, crystal, liberty, justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation.
Let us pray. Dear God, we are glad to be here tonight and are grateful for the way that you have blessed our city, our state, and our country. Yet, we do face challenges, and that's why I pray that you will grant us wisdom, especially to our mayor, our city council members, and our city staff. May the decisions that are made tonight reflect your love and your justice, and may they truly meet the needs of our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Have your report.
Mr. Mayor and Council, the agenda for the May fifteenth, twenty twelve, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on Thursday, May tenth, twenty twelve, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Under presentation and appointments at three is the agenda preview for the meetings of May twenty second, twenty twelve.
Spears.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, for the Glendale Housing Authority for May twenty second, we have no business agenda items. For the Glendale Successor Agency also, we do not have any business agenda items. We do have a City Council and Successor Agency joint meeting in the afternoon to commence at 3:00 P.M. Director of Community Development, this is regarding an update on the Gate Program project, which is the Glendale Area Temporary Exhibitions Art in Vacant Storefronts. That evening for the City Council, we have a few items. We have our Director of Human Resources. We have an item for GMA, the Glendale Management Association, a reclassification. We have a public hearing from the Director of Public Works. This is a vacation and sale of property located at forty-six forty-eight and forty-six sixty San Fernando Road. And lastly, from the Director of Community Services, we have two items, design contract for the Maple Park Pacific Edison turf, this is an award of contract, and the car park and brand park gates. This is adopting specs and advertising going out for bids. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Rebe, is a proclamation designated May nineteenth, twenty twelve, as Glendale's Great American Cleanup Day.
The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the Glendale City Council is committed to a litter-free community with neighborhoods that provide residents a high quality of life, the city of Glendale is fortunate to have conscientious, hard-working, and dedicated volunteers who feel a personal responsibility to continually maintain Glendale as a clean and beautiful community. The Committee for a Clean and Beautiful Glendale raises funds annually to support the city's community beautification efforts and civic pride efforts. The efforts of the Committee for a Clean and Beautiful Glendale resulted in the city's designation as the number-one Keep America Beautiful City in the nation. The efforts of the Committee for a Clean and Beautiful Glendale resulted in a commitment from more than four hundred volunteers to actively help eliminate blight, pick up litter, and beautify the city by participating in the twenty-fourth annual Glendale Great American Cleanup on Saturday, May nineteenth, twenty twelve. These Glendale residents will join millions of other volunteers across the nation in performing community improvement projects as part of the Keep America Beautiful Great American Cleanup Day. Therefore, I, Frank Quintero, Mayor of the City of Glendale, proclaim May nineteenth, twenty twelve, as Glendale's Great American Cleanup City.
Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, council members and staff. My name is Pauline Ferguson. I am the chairperson for the Committee for a Clean and Beautiful Glendale. I would like to invite you and all the Glendale residents to take part in our twenty-fourth annual Great American Cleanup being held on Saturday, May nineteenth, on the one-hundredth block of North Isabel Street in front of the police station. Following the cleanup, the volunteers will be served a barbecue lunch prepared by the Jewel City Kiawanas. In twenty-eleven, close to three point eight million volunteers across the nation participated in Keep America Beautiful's National Great American Cleanup, donating over five million hours of community service. We encourage the community to join us on May nineteenth. Anyone interested in participating can call the Neighborhood Services Office at eight-one-eight-five-four-eight-two-eight-seven-seven to pre-register for the event, or they can register online at cleanupglendale.org. Thank you. Sam?
Thanks, Pauline. Standing behind me is the other person that represents the committee tonight, and that's Margaret Hammond. We have a committee of fourteen people, and they will be out actually helping all of us in Neighborhood Services operate the event. This event started twenty-four years ago as Glendale's Great Graffiti Paintout. At the time, our city was overwhelmed with graffiti, and you think back then, it's a different city now than it was. It was our community's response to say that graffiti would not be tolerated here. At the time, city staff was removing between eighty-five thousand and a hundred thousand square feet of graffiti each month, and the community felt this event was needed. At the paintout, typically in those years, we would remove about a hundred and fifty thousand square feet from the city in just that one morning. Today, the event has changed a lot because it's about beautifying our community and tackling blight hands-on. We actually do very little graffiti removal now. Why? Because of the policy adopted by our city council and implemented by Neighborhood Services in partnership with the community and Glendale Clean and Beautiful, we have been able to reduce the monthly graffiti production to about eighteen thousand square feet. The link between that very effective policy that was adopted by our city council, directed code enforcement, preventative programs in our schools, community participation to solve the problem, and volunteer efforts has meant that our community is recognized as being clean and graffiti-free. How do we know that? The city's branding company, North Star, conducted a survey before they did our branding, and what was the number-one thing people said about our city? It's clean and well-maintained. This Saturday's cleanup is one of the programs that helps us maintain that image. Like our chair, Pauline Ferguson, I'd like to encourage you and anyone else who's watching tonight and who's interested in making our community a better place to come out this Saturday and lend a hand. Again, you can register by phone by calling the Neighborhood Services Office at eight-one-eight-five-four-eight-two-eight-seven-seven. That number is online registration twenty-four hours, or by going online to cleanupglendale.org, our online registration site. Again, I'd like to see all of you out there. We're looking forward to a great day. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Next is City Council and Staff Comments. Weaver.
As you know, Father's Follies came in here two or three weeks ago inviting us to come to their event. I went last week, and courtesy of Channel Seven News, I'd like to play a little tape that they had on their newscast on Saturday morning. All right, can you play that now?
You are looking at the longest-running PTA production show in the United States. Last night was opening night for Alice in the Woodlands, the latest musical from the dads at Verdugo Woodlands Elementary School in Glendale. Sixty-five years ago, the school's dads agreed to come up with Father's Follies shows, combining singing, dancing, and yes, even cross-dressing, as a fundraising effort for their PTA, and have been going strong ever since. Some talented dads out there. Look at them.
Good sports.
Snookies out there.
Yeah, yeah.
There are a lot of them. That is right.
Some very attractive men dressed up like women, dancing, singing.
Very voluptuous.
Yes.
Yes.
The reason I did that, I went to the event. I thought I was going to be an ancient lovely. I hope you didn't notice me. I got into that clip. I was one of the Elvis Presley look-alikes. It's pretty hard for me to do, but thank God. I hope nobody recognized me with my wig and dark glasses on.
That would be like Vegas Elvis.
Yeah, and then they got me into guest judge on American Idol, and Art Moore, who was ninety-nine years old, was also a guest judge. The main thing, and I asked for a list, these guys that are out there, you saw them. You wonder what they do for a living. Now, this is Verdugo Woodlands' fathers, just one elementary school, and I wanted to read you some of the professions of these fathers, just to go to show what we have in this city. We had a doctor. He's an E.R. in Olivio Hospital and at UCLA. He's one of the five most premier infectious disease experts in the United States. He travels all over the United States in that capacity. We had attorneys, fine artists, kindergarten teacher, second-grade teacher, the CEO of a managed healthcare company, the CEO of an insurance company, a lighting director for many television shows, including Dancing with the Stars, a master mechanic, vice president for a major music label, which is Warner Brothers, several studio and other professional musicians, an Emmy Award-winning television engineer, social worker, pastor of the First Presbyterian Church down the road, architects, computer network engineers, published authors, Disney artists, illustrators, special effects experts for the entertainment industry, real estate broker, mortgage broker, seafood distribution company owner, JPL interplanetary physicist, graphic designers, flavor chemist, whatever that is, or award-winning costume designer, aviation specialist, stay-at-home dads, strategic content marketer, composers, motorcycle salesman, set painters, mechanical engineer, vice president of Glendale High School, occupational therapist, filmmakers, entrepreneurs, computer programmers, custodians, painting contractors, insurance brokers, and safe manufacturers. All of those were in those scenes and more that were there. It just goes to show, in this city of ours, the people that live here and work that you never know about, and all of these very high professionals that have a lot to do, and they spent weeks preparing for that. I only had to spend two nights, and I got one line. And I see them year after year doing it. This is my fourth year, and I give all the credit to them. Sixty-five years they've done this, and they deserve a lot of allocates to doing it. And I'm just very proud of all you guys out there. I hope some of you watched our council meeting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. I hope next year you get your choice.
I don't know. I mean, I didn't plan on anything this year, and I got there. Oh, Dave, you gotta do this. Oh, Dave, you gotta do that.
Amen.
I will forever think of you as an ancient lovely, Mr. Weaver.
You do that.
Just a few of the events I attended this week, in no particular order. On Saturday, I attended the Montrose History Bike Ride, which was a lot of fun. They had over fifty people on the ride of all ages. We had, I think, three young children and going up until maybe into their seventies. It was a joint effort between the Glendale Historic Society, the Montrose Patch, and the Montrose Bike Shop, along with some of our city departments, Public Works, Community Development, and Parks. It was a lot of fun, and we got to visit several of the historic sites in the area, including Rock Haven, and it was a real treat to have Rock Haven open for us. A lot of the people on the ride had never been inside that site. I also attended the Armenian Medical Society's Gala, which was very well-attended, and they continue to raise a lot of money to spend on the health of the population, which is wonderful. On Friday, I attended a dinner that the Glendale Korea Sister Association hosted to welcome home our elementary school students who were able to go and spend two weeks in Korea. And these are students of all different ethnic backgrounds who were able to go and experience a foreign country for the first time, and they all had great photos, great memories, great insights into what they learned on their trips. And coming up in a few months, we have the other half. We've got the Korean students coming here, and I know that they're looking for host families. So if any of you have kids and you want to host, if you don't have kids and you want to host some Korean students, I'm sure you couldn't find better house guests than these students. So congratulations to the Sister City Association for funding this. It was practically free to the students who participated, and just really an incredible opportunity to be able to experience another country. And I hope that they're able to do it into the future. I also attended Glendale Healthy Kids Taste of Downtown Glendale, which is always a lot of fun. They seem to have a lot of people out there, and they definitely had, I think, more restaurants than I've ever seen participating, so they were able to raise quite a bit of money. So it's a great way for citizens to discover new restaurants around Glendale, but really the purpose of it is to raise money for Glendale Healthy Kids, which is a wonderful organization that provides much-needed medical and dental care to children who otherwise wouldn't have that available to them. So congratulations to them and to everybody who went, and certainly to all of the restaurants who participated. Lastly, on a different note, I also attended last week a meeting of the Independent Cities Association, on whose board I sit, and there was an interesting topic discussed that I just wanted to mention. From time to time, we here at council, I know I've gotten several emails from people complaining about the price of traffic citations, particularly moving ticket violations. Somebody rolls a stop sign or runs a red light and gets a $400 ticket, $300 ticket, and the complaint is, "Oh, you city, you're just giving us this ticket because you want to make money." Well, we make very, very little money off of those tickets. And I asked our city manager, and granted, he's new, but I said, "You know exactly how much we get from every ticket." And he said, "No," he's not really sure. Well, what I found out was that none of the cities are really sure what percentage they're getting on these tickets, because we have no right to audit the counties who are dispersing the money, or whoever it is, higher up, who's dispersing the money. And one of the cities wanted to find out, what are we exactly getting? And so they had to push and push and push their county, I think it was County of L.A., to get an audit done. How much money are you taking in? How is it being divided? How is this working? And at first, the county said, "No, we're not going to, you don't deserve to have this information. It's not publicly available." But they kept pushing, and they got them to finally do the audit. And what they found out was that on a $350 ticket, the average that the city gets is $12. So it's not even close enough, it's not even close to covering the costs that we're paying to issue citations, certainly not covering the salary of the police officer, the vehicle that they're riding in, and all of that. The other thing they found out, which was even more disturbing, maybe not disturbing if you're a different taxing entity, but the other thing they found out is that if you go, and let's say you fight that ticket, and you say, "I don't want to pay a $400 ticket," and the judge says, "I feel bad for you. Maybe it's your first time, so I'm going to reduce that ticket to $300 or $200." All of the proportionate share is not reduced. What they do is, the first taxing entity's in line, the state and then the county gets their full share, and then the next level down, which is the cities, get nothing. So I think it's an interesting story, and certainly something that a lot of people don't know about. I know from the emails I get that people think that the cities get all that money, when in truth, we get very little of that money. So I just wanted to make people aware of that. I think it would be an interesting story for the Glendale news press, just to kind of look into this themselves, since it seems like there's not a whole lot of transparency about how that money is distributed. And ICA wants to take this up as an issue just to at least give cities the ability to have these audits done, so that we can be sure that the money's being distributed the way that the law says it needs to be distributed. Just wanted to make everyone aware of that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I want to take this time to talk about some great performances also, not the ones that Mr. Weaver talked about, but the performances by local swimmers at the CIF Championship Meet held this past week. First, the Chrysena Valley Boys Swim Team outright won the championship. And it's, I mean, the level of swimming competition in California is simply incredible. It's probably the fastest state in all fifty states. There are truly a group of highly talented swimmers. A few years ago, they came before us. A lot of them swim on the Chrysena Kenyatta YMCA team. I think they had won a Junior Olympics meet, and we congratulated them. But these swimmers are really incredible. Young Tay So won the fifty, excuse me, won the 500-yard freestyle and the 100-breast stroke outright. Harrison Tai won the 100-backstroke and 200 IM. They set records with Edward Yee and Louis Wojahoski for the 400-yard freestyle relay. Coached by Jan Sekonju, this is really a talented group, and really, everyone says, "Oh, are you going to go to the Olympics?" These swimmers really have the talent to make it to the Olympics. They're just simply incredible, and we're so fortunate to have them in our city. Two other great performances by other local swimmers. Frederick Abramian, who goes to Loyola High School but is a Glendale resident, won the 50-yard freestyle outright. And Mickey Maury from Glendale High School got a second place in the 100-yard butterfly. So these are young kids that devote hours and hours of their time towards training, year-round, and they really came through. I'm glad that we finally got our first municipal pool open. Hopefully that their success and our pool's availability in the summer will lead to a new generation of successful swimmers to bring pride to their parents, to the community, and to the city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I would like to join the City Council meeting in honor of police officers killed, Glendale police officers who were killed in the line of duty. Beginning with John Kennedy's proclamation, which he signed on May fifteenth, nineteen sixty-two, that date has been recognized as National Police Officers Memorial Day, and our peace officers' daily dedication to the community is greatly appreciated. National Police Week honors the memory of those officers who have paid the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty. Annually, an average of a hundred and fifty peace officers are killed throughout the United States. The potential for danger is a very real part of police officers' daily duties, and it's their courage in the face of those threats which make them an honorable member of society. In Glendale, we pay special tribute to Officer Charles Smith, Leslie Clem, John Isaiah Ekson, and Charles Lazaretto, who was our most recent fallen officer, and he left behind a wife and two young children at the time. He was killed in nineteen ninety-seven. So as the mayor and on behalf of the City Council, we thank each and every one of these individuals and their families for the commitment to this department and the community. Without their valiant efforts, Glendale would not be the safe city we all enjoy. Comments from the staff?
May I just say that...
Justice Weaver.
Shortly after I got on council, and I got a call at two in the morning, one of our officers had been killed. I think I only knew one or two police officers in the entire department then. One of them was Charles Lazaretto. I watched him grow up. I knew his father, brother. It hit me very hard. I'll never forget that memorial service was one of the largest I'd ever seen in Glendale, so very fitting.
Yeah, and his two young kids, who we sort of watched grow up, they would continue to come to different police functions and the Memorial Day commemoration here at the city. And while they're not little kids anymore, but they obviously grew up without a father.
Okay, what's next?
Next is consent, including minutes following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
Motion.
I'll move the consent calendar at five.
In a second. Second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Menuchyan.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
Next is oral communications. This is a three-minute event announcement portion. We will revisit the full five-minute portion at the conclusion of all city business.
Leon Mayer, followed by Wayne Brown.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the council and staff. My name is Leon Mayer. I'm here on behalf of the library and tonight on behalf of the Glendale Healthy Kids, who is co-sponsoring our event this Thursday. I'll give you a heads-up on it. Thursday, seven o'clock is the presentation by Dr. Lawrence Dorr, a Laconyatta resident, internationally well-known, famous orthopedic surgeon. He's written a book on orthopedic surgery. He's traveled around the world, and we've talked about this before. The flyers are available at the library. I gave them out tonight, whoever wanted them, and there'll be refreshments served. Come early. We're having a meeting of the Friends, the annual meeting of the Friends, at six o'clock. You're welcome to join us there as well. So we're looking forward to having you meet one of our most famous speakers this year, Lawrence Dorr, M.D., from Laconyatta. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Wayne Brown, followed by Eric Yussain.
Good evening, and thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before the council and the city of Glendale. My name is Wayne Brown, and I am representing Metro, and we just wanted to thank the city of Glendale for their efforts in helping us to get the word out on our open houses that are in the process of being scheduled right now. We had the first one on Monday night. We have another one this Thursday night in Eagle Rock, which is close by. We will have an additional one on Saturday in La Cenyatta, up at the high school. And I would urge everyone to go out and pick up some trash first, and then come up to the open house, so that we keep everybody happy. We will have three more next week in different locations, including South Pasadena, also in El Monte and in Alhambra. These open houses are being presented to encourage individuals, residents, to get an opportunity to see the alternatives that are being studied at this point for the SR 710, for that particular corridor, the particular transportation alternatives. You'll see situations that'll involve the arterials, bus lanes, different kinds of possible freeway processes that they're looking at, underground processes. So at this point, light rail is also being studied, so nothing is off the boards. Everything is being into the process now that we are in the alternative analysis. We will move through this process this summer and head towards the draft environmental impact statement and report, which will come in the fall, and that will be including another year's worth of studies and processes. So again, this is the time for people to get their comments in, to have an opportunity to talk to the engineers at these open houses, and they'll have an opportunity to see. Again, I want to thank the city of Glendale for their efforts. The information about the open houses is right on the city's website. I was very impressed, and I really thank you for your efforts in that situation. We have a few more of the pamphlets, if people would like them. We'll leave them with the folks in back. But again, I want to thank the city of Glendale for their efforts in helping us in this situation.
You.
Thank you.
Eric Yussain.
My name is Eric Yussain. I'm from Walkby Glendale, and I have a couple announcements. Our first event, we have a couple events coming up this week for Bike Month, which is in May. And our first event is Bike to Work Day, happening this Thursday. We've partnered with the city and several area bike shops, also Glendale Community College to hold pit stops throughout the city. These pit stops will happen through, in the morning, from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. We're gonna make it super easy for people to bike to work that day by stopping at the pit stop and grabbing some refreshments and snacks and goodies, and some maps before they head to work, and we're encouraging everybody to do it. The information you can find for each pit stop location on our website at walkbighglendale.org, and we also have this flyer that we just passed out. Our next event is our second Bicycle Skills Safety Rodeo. We had our first one on May 5 at Fremont Elementary School, and our next one is gonna be this Saturday on May 19 at Artie White Elementary School. It's gonna be from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. This is for kids from kindergarten to sixth grade, and it's, we're gonna, there's three different times that people can attend, kids can attend, it's from, starting at 10:00 a.m., 12:00 p.m., and 2:00 p.m., and this is a great way for kids to learn about bicycle safety techniques and skills that they can, that they can use for their daily rides. And then if we can, this is a picture from our last bicycle rodeo, which we did on May 5. We had over 32 students attend from eight different Glendale-area schools. That's actually a watermelon to demonstrate what happens if you're not wearing a helmet. Once that's dropped, you can see what happens. So it was a great event, and it was at Fremont Elementary School. We also had, on May 9, it was Bike to School Day to Artie White Elementary School. We had 23 students participate. It was led by Officer Joshua Luna, Artie White Elementary School Principal Suzanne Reese, and parents, and Walkby Glendale volunteers all attended. The Glendale News Press had a great article on it, and I encourage you to read it if you haven't read it yet. And lastly, was the Montrose History Ride, which Councilmember Lower Friedman announced earlier. This happened last Saturday, and we had 56 people attend, with a lot of stops, historic stops along the way. It was a short and easy ride, and everybody really enjoyed it. So that's what we've been doing for Bike Month, and we hope to see you in the upcoming events. Thank you.
That's the final card. What's next?
Next, under action items, A.A. City Treasurer, regarding City Treasurer's Quarterly Investment Review as of March 31, 2012. A.A. 1 is a motion to note and file a report.
Show up.
Microphone. We have your quarterly update. I wish it was a little bit better news, alas, the market is what it is, but Mr. Baruchy will give you the details.
Mayor Quintero, city council members. In a nutshell, it's not getting any easier out there. Consistent with the past 13 quarters, the numbers, the rates, and the percentages are down. For the third fiscal quarter ending March 31, the average interest earnings rate for the quarter was down 10 basis points, from 1.12% to 1.02%. For the quarter, earnings were down $95,000 to slightly over $1 million, and totaled $3.3 million for the first nine months of the fiscal year. Through the first nine months of the fiscal year, the year-to-date average rate of return for the portfolio was 1.11%. During the quarter, property tax revenues were short, redevelopment dollars for the first time, and the city portfolio ended the March quarter at $385 million, down $11 million from the previous quarter. Turning to the state pool, the Local Agency Investment Fund, its rate of return for the third quarter averaged .38%, or 38 basis points. And interestingly, this 38 basis points is the exact same rate the Local Agency Investment Fund earned in each of the two previous quarters for the fiscal year. So year-to-date, the Local Agency Investment Fund is returning .38%. On the market outlook, we're gonna turn our attention to Europe. Europe is, once again, on the global scene, front and center, and the treasury market is trading higher again, meaning that treasury bonds are up and rates are down. Investors are becoming more concerned than normal about events on the continent. And it isn't all about Greece. Standard and Poor's cut Spain's credit rating to three levels above junk, and that puts Spain at the same level as Italy. Spain's unemployment rate, already the highest in the European Union, rose to 24.4% in the quarter ending March 31. Spain has just entered its second recession since 2009, and it joins the United Kingdom and six other European nations in recession. Now, I wrote this report two weeks ago. Since then, only the headlines change. Same European problems, different names. Election in France and in Greece, with Greece now threatening not to continue with the bailout terms negotiated with the European Union. Whether the headline nation of the week is Spain, Italy, or Greece, it doesn't matter. Europe is a mess financially, and the global investment community looks for safe assets like treasuries, once again are becoming more of the core investment, at least until some clarity in the eurozone is achieved. Europe will either recover, or it will fail financially, country by country. And as Europe is our largest export customer, this means that the U.S. economy will either grow, and jobs will grow with it, or the U.S. economy won't grow, and America itself could tiptoe around another recession itself. In the meantime, this renewed interest in treasuries continues to push bond prices up and drives interest rates down. This is the same treasury market that impacts our city portfolio. These are the same bonds, the same interest rates, the same yield curve, the same that we experience here. What we have truly is the makings of a global marketplace where actions in Europe influence the investment return of our city portfolio here in Glendale, Glendale, California, half a world away from the problems in Europe. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. Baruchy. I have a card. Herbert Milano.
Mayor Quintero, members of the city council and city staff, my name is Herbert Milano. I think I have been one of the few stakeholders in the city who's ever attended some of the quarterly meetings that Mr. Baruchy holds, along with some of the employees, where he goes over the performance of the portfolio. And for the last couple of years, I have been asking for some very basic information on the sources of funds that make up the portfolio, not where they're invested, because his report basically states where the money is invested. Rather, where is the cash coming from that makes up the portfolio? How many, how much of the money comes from the Glendale Water and Power? How much is money that is from a bond that was issued? We received the proceeds, and now they're parked with the city treasurer, and so on. Even though these reports come out on a quarterly basis, I've continued to provide, to submit Public Records Act requests to the city attorney's office, and it continually is denied. I'm told, "Well, go back to last year's CAFR and calculate it yourself." Well, I tried, but I cannot come up with a number that makes this number up, specifically because oftentimes, I'm making a request for a report, let's say, for the third quarter of the year. That cannot possibly give me the answer by going through the CAFR for June 30. I believe that I have submitted at least five Public Records Act requests for the last couple of years, and the city has consistently denied providing an answer. I've requested a meet and confer to see if someone within the finance department can provide me that information. I think that is information that is essential for the public to have. I did some research, and I found, for example, that the city of Burbank, at least in their annual report, provide a very two-page detail of where the money's come from and how they make up that number. Glendale has $385 million with the city treasurer, who then invests and tries to make the best out of the current situation with, with interest rates. But what we don't have is, where is that money allocated from, from what departments? And also, I want to know if the city's reserves, you're supposed to have roughly 30% to 35% of the general fund, should be there. So if everything is allocated, what should be remaining is that reserve, that real reserve that the city has in case of a significant downturn or a cash fund shortage. So I'm requesting now, once again in public, that the city and the city attorney's office comply with my Public Records Act requests. Thank you very much.
Okay, do I have a motion? Move A.A. 1. Second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Manoukian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes, next please.
Next time is return to oral communication, the full five-minute portion. Discussion is limited. Time is not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes, and council may question or respond to a speaker, but there'll be no debate in our decision, and city manager/mayor for the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Herbert Milano, followed by Chinook Ramirez. Actually, after Herbert Milano, it's actually Suzanne Radich.
Mayor Quintero, members of the city council and staff, my name is Herbert Milano. I would like to address some of the issues that were covered earlier today with regard to the budget and some history with regard to the city's budget. In 1996, I submitted a Public Records Act request to obtain information about the release of salaries, especially those salaries that were over $100,000. Basically, the annual salaries or the annual compensation. And in 1996, the city attorney basically said that they would deny that request, because the city had filed an amicus brief with a legal case that was taking place in the city of Oakland. The Contra Costa Times at the time were, had filed a lawsuit against the city of Oakland to force them to release the information on firefighters' pay. Now, the city of Glendale voluntarily chose to file an amicus brief so it could be in a position not to release the information. So we had to wait until a Supreme Court decision came across that would basically force the cities to release salary information. Since 2007, we received some of the information, and I've been able to get information going back to 2001, so I can do at least comparisons, 2001, 2006, 2011. And every year, I basically go out and try to compare to see what are the trends in total compensation. What I have found out is that invariably, that compensation has grown for perhaps about every position out there across the board. In other words, it seems as if the recession really has not hit city employees. I particularly focus from the, you know, management and the highest-paid employees, and basically look at those trends. And it's, to me, it's an incredibly unfair situation that finding that so many city residents are unable to afford the electricity rates and the water rates, individuals on fixed incomes, that the interest in the situation that general residents and stakeholders have do not seem to have as much weight as the demands for continual pay and benefit increases from fire, police, and management. And that's where my issue is with regard to the budget trends. Now, I think that this past month, for the first time since the last, since I've been coming to city council, which has been about 11 years now, that we have a budget presentation that is probably the most comprehensive I've seen and concise to some extent, and it synthesizes the situation. But I would love to see a trend analysis of what's taking place, department by department, with regard to salaries and benefits. Because when you approved the pension increases back in 2001, I believe that honestly, some of the council members did not know the impact of that decision. It's an impact that by law, you're now committed to withhold. I don't think it could be fought. So we have a range of hundreds and hundreds of employees who received this amazing pension change, based upon the last year's salary, 90% of that salary, which oftentimes is spiked on the last year. And even though you made changes for new employees, you still have a significant number of employees who benefited from that change. The worst part about that particular pension change, the 3% at 50 back in 2001, is that you made it retroactive to 1971, making every employee that worked in Glendale in fire and police eligible for that benefit. The impact, of course, is a significant drain on the city's resources, such that we're not able to pay for proper infrastructure, you're forced to take money from the Glendale Water and Power, you're forced to raise the rates on ratepayers, and there doesn't seem to be a sufficient consideration of the gains that these employees have had all of these years. The main one is that we protect their pension. If CalPERS is unable to meet the 7.34% return, we pay for it. And yet, this is being paid for by individuals whose pension is not guaranteed, whose jobs are not guaranteed, who often are on fixed incomes, and who oftentimes, thousands of them, are hardly able to pay even their electric bill. And as you go through your negotiations... And as you go through your negotiations, they gotta know, and they have to see these numbers year to year, and you have to basically present it to them, whoever is going to be negotiating with these entities, that this is an incredibly unfair and unsustainable situation, and unfair for all the stakeholders and residents of Glendale. They have to give up something, because by law you cannot change that pension now. We're stuck. But they have to consider something with regard to bringing the city back to a good financial situation. Thank you very much.
Suzanne Radich, followed by Chinook. She actually turned the card in first, followed by Chinook Ramirez.
Hello, my name is Susannah Radich, and I'm here tonight on behalf of my parents to explain a situation that happened a couple months ago. My parents live here in Glendale, a corner property house. And the city, this was in December of 2011, and the city workers were drilling, making in the four-stop sign area, the Circle Island. And they were drilling extensively from early morning till the evening for several weeks. So we started noticing a lot of cracks in the ceiling, and my parents have an older type of ceiling, plaster ceiling. Started noticing cracks, and started noticing them getting larger, more cracks in the living rooms, dining rooms, the bedrooms, the outside stucco. So my dad went outside and pulled one of the city workers, and he happened to be a city inspector by the name of Art, we didn't get his last name. And so he came into the home, he took pictures of the damage, and he advised my dad to make a claim to the city for damages so that they can pay for the damages. So my dad made a claim, and he received notice on May 1st that the claim was denied. We did take an estimate, as Art advised us, and it was still denied. So I'm here to kind of ask for help as to what to do in this matter, how to proceed to claim the damages for the city work.
Can we answer oral communication questions after everything is, after all the speakers have spoken, so?
Okay.
See for a few more minutes.
Thank you.
Chinook Ramirez, followed by Mike Mohill.
Good evening. Do we have five minutes or three minutes? Okay, thank you. This is a matter of principle. I'd like to wish my father, Antonio Ramirez, a happy birthday. My father was black and white, all or nothing, and he was not a coward. I'd like to play Las Mañanitas to him with an elegant, classy, and refined Mexican mariachi band. He especially loved Agustin Lara, Javier Solis, Glenn Miller, Hank Jr., Benny Goodman, et cetera. He loved watching Bob Hope, Bing Crosby, Dorothy Lamour, that girl with that contagious smile, The Honeymooners, oh, they used to get pissed and mad, and my three sons. So, and I watch them now. Papa, may you and Mama rest in peace. Chihuahua will be there soon. My father and mother both loved America and the United States military, so I would love to say thank you to all our brave warriors and veterans on behalf of my parents and myself. They are the following: the United States' top brass Pentagon officials, including Commander John Allen; the United States Department of Defense, including Secretary Leon Panetta; the United States' military aviators and Top Gun; the United States Marine Corps; the United States Army; the United States Air Force; the United States Navy; the United States Navy SEALs, and including the Navy SEAL Team Six, who were shot down in Afghanistan last August 2011. Remember, they executed the excellent meticulous plan to take down Osama bin Laden. May they rest in peace. The United States National Guard; the United States Green Berets; the United States Coast Guard; the United States' top secret for national security purposes; the United States' commercial airline pilots, co-pilots, and engineers; the United States' Glendale City LAPD, Sheriff's Department, and emergency crew chopper pilots; and of course, my beloved Gillespie Airfield Daredevil pilots extraordinaire who are flying over again, including right here in the city of Glendale; and our Gillespie Daredevil pilot extraordinaire Gordon Woodard, who died in a pilot accident in January 2012. To all military veterans and fallen soldiers, along with all pilots who were killed and/or died, may you rest in peace. You will not be forgotten. You are dearly loved. Furthermore, my parents and I love the military because the military taught boys how to be real men, not sissies. And boy, could you hire them in the Glendale PD and all the other police departments. It also honed into bringing out their raw talents and innate greatness with blood, sweat, and tears. And they are brave, honorable, and courageous warriors, for they have truly sacrificed their entire human existence for the love of America. We dearly love and admire you, military patriots and all pilots. You truly kick ass. Thus, I'd like to pray for the United States' military vets and all pilots and all struggling legal, law-abiding citizens in America, including two lovely people I met tonight, Mrs. Mona Montgomery, and she gave me some good news, and Eric Yessadin, who also gave me some bright inspiration. To the aforementioned, I'd like to say, may the universe bless them and endow them with wisdom, knowledge, discernment, understanding, protection, and safety, riches in prosperity, and love and long life for them, their families, their children, and all their loved ones. May America realize how greatly it needs the United States military and all the military veterans, including those who have hate against the United States military. I am one who am grateful, and I bow down to this country and our military veterans. And again, I ask you for the protection and safety for all legal, law-abiding citizens, American citizens, as well as our military and all pilots. Protect them up in the skies and protect them on ground. May they safely go airborne, and may they safely touchdown. Again, bless our air traffic controllers, our command centers, our mechanics and crew, and all people involved in the aviation industry, and all those pilots who are on furlough, may they be hired by the end of this year. Again, I thank you, and I love you, and I am so deeply humbled by your presence, pilots. Thank you so much. And having said that, again, I am truly humbled by the greatness of the universe. I became an American citizen, passed all my background checks, and my parents, and we did it by the letter of the law, and I am a proud Mexican-American. I am so blessed. Thank you so very much. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, councilmembers in the viewing audience. My name is Mike Mohill. What a difference a day makes. The public trust, guilty or innocent. With the recent 28-count grand jury felony indictment of former mayor John Drayman, many questions remain. Who else will be going down with Honest John? Mr. Michael Kraut, Drayman's attorney, said the court had only heard the grand jury side of the story. Will there be more indictments in the future? The public trust, guilty or innocent. Councilmembers Najarian, Friedman, and Mayor Quintero, what do you think of your friend, Honest John? I see where at least two of you were seen running for the hills, if just you barely knew John. Mr. Quintero, didn't you used to say you and John were like two peas in a pod? At one time, you went so far as to want to nominate him for mayor the day after he was elected in April 2007. The public trust, guilty or innocent. Mrs. Friedman, it appeared last week that you were extremely nervous after the news of your good friend, John Drayman. His indictment became public. Are you worried that he might want to spill the beans on you too, in order to save himself? The public trust, guilty or innocent. Councilmembers Friedman, Najarian, and Quintero, did you know John was a closeted thief since 2004? Did you allow John Drayman to manipulate you? Did you know that he, did you know about his misdeeds and all remained silent? Were you all gullible? If so, sad to say, you were all his enablers. Did you know the public trust? What did you all know? The public trust, guilty or innocent. It's time to clean house and restore the public trust. I personally think you all should resign now and save the Glendale residents the embarrassment of seeing your pictures in the Glendale news press as we saw last week. Thank you. My name is Mike Mohill.
Mona Montgomery, followed by Tony Passarella.
Members of council and residents of Glendale, my name is Mona Montgomery, and I live in Glendale. Chinook Ramirez made statements on March 20th and April 17th about how she was beaten up by two women, which started when a cashier was rude to her. Guess it doesn't work.
What do you need?
It's supposed to be a little movie.
It...
Okay.
I'm sure...
Then I'll just have to fake it. What she said was that she was standing in line waiting to pay for a sandwich, and this clerk was busy talking on the phone about how much she hated America. And Chinook got mad and said, if you hate us so much, why don't you go back to your own country? Next slide, please. Next slide. She decided, because there was no name badge, she felt she needed to take a picture of the lady in order to identify her to her employer. Next slide. So she did take a picture. Next slide. Just skip to yours. The cashier and the daughter beat Chinook up to get the camera. And what she described was truly harrowing, two women on one, pulling her hair both sides so that she could barely keep from being thrown down on the ground, which would have created a fatal blow. Anyone who knows about street fighting knows when they get you on the ground, it becomes each, the blows are four times harsher than when your body's moving. So they were attempting to apply fatal force. And she screamed twice for the cops. So obviously, she was the one that was asking for help. Next slide, please. When the cops talked to her, they found out that she had said, go back to your own country. They said to her, they chastised her for hate speech, I guess, well, you're not supposed to tell these ladies that they have to go back to their country. One. When she asked them why they weren't arresting these ladies for this tremendous amount of brutality she had suffered, they said, we don't have any, there's no element of intent here. I had to figure that out, and what I assumed they meant was that because of the fact that she was being, according to their story, was they were lawfully detaining her for arrest because something she had done, not noticing the fact that, next slide, please. A citizen making a citizen's arrest does not have the right to exercise lethal force, even if a felon is fleeing. Now, in this case, she had committed no crime at all, but given, even if everything the other side said was true, the cops had no right to just walk away from the situation because the other story was, well, she was causing trouble, and we had to detain her, and, you know, we had to inflict all those injuries on her. That is not within the law, which is why I'm asking you to not see this as a racist rant, but as a woman who came in two days after she was brutally beaten up to you for help, she's still apparently under an emotional trauma, tremendous emotional trauma, and instead of referring it to the police, which is what I'm asking you to do for review, you simply chastised her for racist rants, and bigotry, and discrimination, and yada, da yada, da yada. It's time to balance things evenly. Speech is speech. Being beaten up is being beaten up. You don't have the right to beat somebody up, even if they do use bigoted statements, which she didn't even use. So, except unless you call it worthy of a beating if you tell someone to go back to their own country because they're saying how much they hate America. Thank you.
Tony Passarella, followed by Harry Zallos.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Whoops. Captain Hewing Longley. My name is Tony Passarella, 25-year resident of the city of Glendale. Just under two years ago, I went down a rabbit hole on the Internet. I went to government websites, military websites, literally spent countless numbers of hours researching and reading articles, viewing literally hundreds of YouTube videos. And I came out the other side finding some very startling, if not very scary, information in regards to major corporations and other entities perpetrating dastardly deeds on the American public. And I just want to share one of them with you tonight. It's the old battle, the 50-year debate in regards to water fluoridation. This commentary is from Mike Adams of NaturalNews.com. It reads, "Even though the CDC's decision still supports water fluoridation, it nevertheless sends a powerful message across the country that too much fluoride is dangerous for your health. This should slap shut the mouths of at least some of the fluoride-pimping dentists and doctors who have been advocating this mass poisoning of our nation for the last several decades." But there's much more to the story that's not being reported anywhere else. For one thing, do you know where fluoride comes from? It turns out that so-called fluoride is really fluorosilic acid, the toxic waste byproduct of the phosphate mining industry. If it wasn't being dumped into the water supplies of major cities, it would have been dispersed as a hazardous, toxic waste chemical under EPA rules. When the phosphate mining industry used to release fluoride byproducts directly into the atmosphere from the fumes of the acidic slurry used to process phosphate rock, it caused the widespread death of cattle and crops. In order to protect local livestock from fluoride poisoning, wet scrubbers were installed at the phosphate mining processing sites in order to collect the toxic fluoride and prevent it from being released into the atmosphere. Fluoresilic acid is derived from wet scrub, is derived from these wet scrubbers, then sold to cities like Glendale and to towns to have it dumped into the water supply. That's one reason why so-called fluoride is so toxic. It is not naturally occurring mineral. It's actually a toxic waste chemical that, if were dumped into the water supply by a terrorist, would be called a weapon of mass destruction. The act of dumping it into the water, from any rational perspective, must be considered an act of terrorism. For the CDC to limit this act of terrorism to only 0.7 milligrams per liter rather than 1.2 milligrams per liter isn't exactly a huge victory. As Connet, this is Paul Connet, author of the book, Dangers of Water Fluoridation, Connet explains, "It is actually an admission that the CDC supports the mass poisoning of American people with a dangerous, toxic chemical." I am not here to frighten the American public. Citizens of Glendale, I'm here to inform and alert the citizens of Glendale, and ask you to take time. My lifestyle changed where I had the time to investigate some of these things. And it's all there. I mean, the Internet is the information highway after all. So please, people of Glendale, take the time and go on the Internet and research some of this stuff. Thank you. Thank you. My name is Tony Passarella.
Harry Zavos, followed by Bill Wiseman.
Councilman, my name is Harry Zavos. I'm a citizen of Glendale. I understand that GWP is going to recommend a electrical rate increase to cover critical capital improvements that without the increase will have to be deferred. With that regard, I wish the council to be alive to the fact that under Article 13(c) of the state constitution, as amended by Proposition 26, such a proposal has to be put to a vote of the people. And here's why I say that. Article 13(c) of the state constitution defines local government to include a charter city. So by its terms, it would apply to a charter city. Second, it defines tax as used in Article 13(c) broadly, so as to include an electrical rate increase. And here I quote, "As used in this article, tax means any levy, charge, or extraction of any kind imposed by local government except the following." And then it lists seven exceptions, which would not be a tax. Now, the only one that remotely would apply to an electrical fee is the second one. And again, I quote from the Constitution. "A charge imposed for a specific government service or product provided directly to the payer." So far, so good. Electrical fees are charged to ratepayers to supply them electrical power. But then it goes on to say, "And is not provided to those not charged." Ah, there's the rub. Because electricity for streetlights, electricity for traffic lights, is provided to the general public without charge. So it doesn't meet that first requirement. And if that were not the case, it goes on to state, "And which does not exceed the reasonable costs to the local government of providing the service or product." And we know that under the current budget being considered, almost $21 million is going to be transferred of electrical funds are going to be transferred to the general fund. An amount which, if it's not transferred, would take care of almost all of those critical capital improvements that would have to be deferred without the rate increase. So neither of those requirements to exclude a rate increase for electrical power fits the definition of Article 13(c). So now, as a tax, what kind of a tax is it? And again, Article 13(c) tells us, in Section 1, subsection D, it says, "A special tax means any tax imposed for specific purposes." In this case, the fee is imposed for the specific purpose of providing electrical power. And as a special tax, Article 2, Section D of Article 13(c) of the California Constitution provides as follows. "No local government, including a charter government, may impose, extend, or increase any special tax unless and until that tax is submitted to the electorate and approved by a two-thirds vote." Now, if this council is going to consider a rate increase, and if its city attorney has not advised it already, that such a rate increase under the state constitution must be submitted to a vote of the people, then I urge this council to ask for a formal legal opinion as to whether or not, under Article 13(c), given the transfer of electrical funds to the general fund, given the supplying of electricity to the general public, whether under Article 13(c) this city is required to submit any proposed rate increase of electrical rates to the voting public. I also am going to submit, if I can just explain briefly, to the city manager, and he can supply copies to the council and to the city attorney, as to why, under the charter, if in fact there are critical improvements necessary for the electrical works under the charter, no funds can be transferred from the electrical works to the general fund. And I would be glad to go over that with the general manager or anybody else.
Bill Wiseman, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff, and the public. My name is Bill Wiseman, from far north Glendale. And you know, it's kind of a shame, but not really a surprise, that certain people seem not to have paid any attention in their high school civics classes, because otherwise they might know that this is the United States of America. And this is a country where people are innocent until proven guilty. And it's especially grating to hear from someone who's been proven guilty numerous times to be up here prematurely positive that somebody else has committed crimes. And I don't believe that any of our city council members have anything to fear from any kind of revelations. And I know you've had a very long day, and I'm not going to take up any more of your time. So thank you very much.
Margaret Hammond.
Good evening, Your Honor, Mayor, members of city council, city staff, members of the My name is Margaret Hammond. And I've been here 52 years. And I happen to be an American who emigrated from Canada. I'm not hyphenated American. I'm an American. That's why we came here, my husband and I, and my small daughter. Here we have free bulky pickup. I see a lot of articles around town again. I guess people are doing their spring cleaning. Please call and help to keep our city neat and tidy and improve our quality of life. I am a member of several groups in Glendale, volunteer. And of course, I believe if you belong, you have to volunteer, and I believe you have to work at it. No use belonging and just doing, you know, oral whatever. The Patrons Club of Glendale College, who are celebrating, by the way, 65 years of service this year to the city of Glendale, to students. And on Thursday, they will be awarding multiple scholarships to students at Glendale College and who will be attending colleges in California. I think it's about $25,000 this year. This group of ladies are mostly seniors, and by senior, I want to say. And also, Dr. David and his lovely lady happen to be members of our Patrons Club. And he is a great person to have on your side, let me tell you. He helps raise funds. And we also have a lady, 106-year-old Gertrude Ness. I'm sure many of you know her, who belongs to our group and models at the Castaway Show to help us raise funds for the students. Many, many volunteer hours. And as I said, the ladies are 80, 90 years old, mostly. I'd say the majority. And of course, 106. So we do put in a lot of work because we believe in what we're doing. And that's really a very satisfying feeling. The college, I think it's 85 years this year, they are. And that's what we will be celebrating at the Castaway. And then one of the other things is that I do hope that Adams Hill will be getting help with the water problem, the water, whatever, with the hydrants and so forth. When you get the money, they need to have it done. It's vital. The one thing that came up was about Mobile T, who suddenly came up and wanted to pop some, I don't know, towers or whatever, on a building, an apartment building in Glendale. And I was not aware of it until almost too late, but a lady, Carol Houlis, who has big health problems, she had to leave because she was going for spinal, some spinal shots. But she went around and got the people and signed up petitions and so forth. And we went before the commission, and they did help us with that problem. And it has been resolved that they will not be putting the towers in our area. Although one of the people on that commission said, "Oh, well, I don't know that it would bother Adams Hill, because what view do they have?" Or whatever. We have a great view, one of the best in the city, I would say, probably better than anybody else. All you do, go up to Forest Lawn and look down, and you'll see what a tremendous view. I love it. And I could live anywhere I want, in California, not just in Glendale, but I think it's the best place in Glendale to live. And my neighbors are wonderful neighbors. Now, as to the situation with Mr. Drayman, I'm not going to go there other than saying I remember Mr. Weaver, many years ago, bringing up this problem with the Montrose, whatever, merchants, so forth, what was something happening. And he was sort of shushed off and closed up, and nobody backed him, so of course, he kind of gave up on that subject. And so I don't think that it hasn't been addressed before. It has been talked about. And I'm going to let it go at that, because it's not doing anybody any good, our city being on TV as having faults. We all have faults. Let's hope that the good Lord will take care of us with that. Thank you.
This meeting is adjourned. You can decide here and we can...
If you can't hear...
So when the meeting's adjourned, you can come here to decide, and we'll talk about your issue. Any other comments?
No. The issue Mr. Milano brought up in terms of fund balances, is that a secret? Or people have to go calculate it? We provide the community on the Internet what the fund balances are made up of, the funds that we have?
I think the response was provided by city attorney's office was that the information is available in the CAFER as a document, but that was not sufficient for Mr. Milano. We ended up sending him information that was in your PowerPoint presentation, I think a couple of weeks ago, that showed where the different fund balances were that made up the portfolio amount. So I haven't heard back from him, so I'm presuming that he has what he needs.
Okay. Thank you.
And if I may just add to that, obviously, our policy in the Public Records Act is always to comply. We always comply. If we have records that are responsive to requests, we provide them. If there's a particular exemption that might apply, we might have to withhold them. I think the issue is, we're not required to create new documents in response to requests. And I think that's part of the issue, part of the concern here. But we've provided everything that we know we have. I know that my staff and Mr. Elliott's staff are working just to make sure there are no other documents that exist currently that might be responsive to that request.
Thank you.
Other comments?
We do have new business now. I'll move that the city attorney, being hereby, is authorized to initiate legal action in Superior Court. Name of the action, the defendants, and the nature of the action shall be disclosed to any person upon inquiry, once the action has commenced. The city attorney is further authorized to incur any and all expenses necessary in connection with said matter.
Paul?
Council members Friedman?
Yes.
Chinookian?
Yes.
Nigeryan?
Do we put a fee cap on any of those things? I mean, any and all is a rather broad...
It is obviously, with litigation, we bring that back to you on a regular basis.
Oh, I see, as it goes forward.
And actually, the contract that was previously approved by the firm in this particular case has a fee cap.
Okay. Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
And I would like to move that the matter entitled Carbo Hall versus the city of Glendale Superior Court case number BC 481564 be compromised and settled for the full and complete sum of $29,000, and the same is hereby approved and accepted, and the director of finance is authorized to issue a warrant in said sum for delivery by the city attorney upon the execution by the plaintiff of release and dismissal with prejudice.
Hold call. Council members Friedman?
Yes.
Chinookian?
Yes.
Nigeryan?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes. Next?
In the memory of the four police officers.
We are adjourned.